Hear ye, hear ye, hear ye, this honorable commissioner's meeting in Roan County, Tennessee is now in session. Honorable Chairman Darryl Meadows presiding. God bless these United States, the great state of Tennessee, and its honorable court. At this time, Commissioner Jerry White will lead us in prayer. Afterwards, please remain standing for the pledge of the American flag.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this privilege to come out tonight. Father, we thank you for the beautiful day you've given us for life. Father, we just pray your blessings on the commissioners tonight. Father, you acquit their spirits and may we take care of the county's business. Thank you for the people that are here in the audience tonight, our ball teams. Father, we support them. Father, I just pray everything tonight will give you the glory and the honor. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. If you have a cell phone, please turn it down.
Our computer system is down, so this meeting will be done by roll call. Call roll, please.
Bell?
Present.
Berry?
Present.
Cunningham?
Here.
East?
Here.
Ellis?
Here.
Ferguson?
Here.
Gann?
Here.
Hendrickson?
Here.
Esther?
Here.
Hooks?
Here.
Meadows?
Here.
Parkinson?
Here.
White?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
We do have a forum. Next up on the agenda is approval of the minutes of March 14th, 2022 meeting. We have a motion by Commissioner Hester, second by Commissioner Ellis. Anyone care to comment or ask any questions? Call roll the minutes, please.
Darryl?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm 13. It's the Riley Creek Camp round. I was wondering when the, does anybody, Mr. Woody, do you know when that subcommittee meets again for the parking wreck?
We do next, I do. We meet next Tuesday. We'll be meeting on, it's going back.
So you're reevaluating?
Yes, sir. We're gonna, we're gonna go back and reevaluate it based on some information that's been provided. So we will go back and reevaluate it and come with other suggestions.
That's a policy.
Anyone else? Call roll, please.
Bell?
Aye.
For Shears?
Aye.
Cunningham?
Yes.
East?
Yeah.
Ellis?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
The meeting, the minutes are approved. Next up is about to accept meeting reports and correspondence. Do we have a motion?
We have a motion.
Second. We have a motion by Wilson, we have a second by White. Commissioner Wilson?
I have none, sir.
Commissioner White?
Nothing bad, sir.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Call roll, please.
Bell?
Aye.
For Shears?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
East?
Yeah.
Ellis?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
The mark's set. We're waving nuggets.
We got Virginia L. Barberwick, Marcia Childs, Sharon C. Christmas, Tanika Collier, Gaila C. Cox, Cecilia Hendrickson, Ashley Hughes, Deborah V. Hyder, Deana L. Jackson, Stacy Knight, Kristy Ann Martin, Sarah Lindsey McCully, Miss Simona Schuford, Tammy Sparks, and Angela Waller.
Make a motion, sir.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. You think that over here?
Nothing.
Mr. Hester?
Appreciate your wellness, sir.
Anyone else? Call roll to the privy nuggets.
Bell?
Yes.
For Shears?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
East?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
Madam Clerk?
No. Mr. Berry?
Thank you.
And please note, Mr. Berry did make an end. Okay, you, no one has any problems with this. I'd like to change around the order of the agenda a little bit. We have several people out in the audience that are here for presentations, and we'd like to go ahead and get that over with if anyone, if no one has any issues with that. Now, first, we do have a resolution before us to waive the 12-day rule and a resolution of the Roan County Commission honoring the 2021 through 2022 Roan State Raiders men's basketball team. So we have a motion to, uh, waive the 12-day rule, we have a second. Mr. Berry, anything?
Uh, no, this, this just came in late. Actually, they, they had their tournament, and I just thought it was fitting that we honor them while we're doing basketball tonight, the Roan State Raiders.
Mr. Hendrickson?
None, sir.
Anyone else? Okay, call roll on waiving the 12-day rule.
Bell?
Aye.
Berry?
Yes.
For Shears?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
East?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, if, again, if no one has any problems, I'd like to take resolutions 4-22-01 regarding Harman High School girls' basketball team, resolution 4-22-02, resolution honoring the Harman High School boys' basketball team, then behind that, it's a resolution to honor Roan State. Is that okay to everybody?
Yes.
Do we have to have a motion to that, Greg?
We have. Motion to what?
To move the agenda around.
No, you, you didn't have any opposition, so you're fine.
Okay, all right. Next resolution is 4-22-01, the resolution of the Roan County Commission honoring the Harman High School girls' basketball team for their winning performance. Motion by Ferguson, second by Hendrickson. Mr. Ferguson?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that I'm proud of these girls, what they've done. They've done a lot. They've done a good job. I know their parents are proud of them, their grandparents, I know I am. And I would also like to say that I would like to thank Mr. Bobby Clark for helping me get this together. I called him, and he was very helpful, helping us up the resolution together.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Greg. All the teams done well, and I was wondering if we were gonna have to raise the door a little bit, because they just kept getting dollar to dollar.
They ducked.
Yeah. But anyway, we appreciate everything that you've done for the city and the county.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Ellis?
Yeah, I want to congratulate the girls also. We had some good basketball from high school all the way to college this year, so congratulations to the girls and Coach Davis.
Okay, Mr. Berry?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's just fitting to mention Coach Davis. You know, we couldn't meet him at Warburg, so we brought him to Harman. And, you know, if you watch Coach Davis, you know he's a little animated on the sidelines sometimes. Coach Davis, congratulations and welcome to Roan County.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, we have a motion, we have a second. Let's talk about the resolution, please.
Bell?
Aye.
Berry?
Yes.
For Shears?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
East?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, again, if no one has any problems, I'd like to take resolutions 4-22-01 regarding Harman High School girls' basketball team, resolution 4-22-02, resolution honoring the Harman High School boys' basketball team, then behind that, it's a resolution to honor Roan State. Is that okay to everybody?
Yes.
Do we have to have a motion to that, Greg?
We have. Motion to what?
To move the agenda around.
No, you, you didn't have any opposition, so you're fine.
Okay, all right. Next resolution is 4-22-01, the resolution of the Roan County Commission honoring the Harman High School girls' basketball team for their winning performance. Motion by Ferguson, second by Hendrickson. Mr. Ferguson?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that I'm proud of these girls, what they've done. They've done a lot. They've done a good job. I know their parents are proud of them, their grandparents, I know I am. And I would also like to say that I would like to thank Mr. Bobby Clark for helping me get this together. I called him, and he was very helpful, helping us up the resolution together.
Mr. Ellis?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Greg. All the teams done well, and I was wondering if we were gonna have to raise the door a little bit, because they just kept getting dollar to dollar.
They ducked.
Yeah. But anyway, we appreciate everything that you've done for the city and the county.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Ellis?
Yeah, I want to congratulate the girls also. We had some good basketball from high school all the way to college this year, so congratulations to the girls and Coach Davis.
Okay, Mr. Berry?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's just fitting to mention Coach Davis. You know, we couldn't meet him at Warburg, so we brought him to Harman. And, you know, if you've watched Coach Davis, you know he's a little animated on the sidelines sometimes. Coach Davis, congratulations and welcome to Roan County.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, we have a motion, we have a second. Let's talk about the resolution, please.
Bell?
Aye.
Berry?
Yes.
For Shears?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
East?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Resolution passed. I'd like to read this resolution, please. It's a resolution of the Roan County Commission honoring the Harman High School boys' basketball team for their winning performance. Whereas, the Harman High School boys' basketball team excelled in postseason play, finishing with an overall record of 17-14, and whereas, the Harman High School boys' basketball team won the district championships, and whereas, the Harman High School boys' basketball team won the region championship, defeating Auburn Springs 64-56, and whereas, the players will be commended for their efforts and their dedication to the game, and whereas, the Harman High School boys' basketball team's head coach and assistant coaches are to be commended for their leadership and dedication to the team. Now therefore, be resolved that the Roan County Commission does hereby honor the Harman High School boys' basketball team for their winning performance.
Their boys don't smile.
Yeah, they don't smile.
Coach Davis, how many, how many of this regional championships have you had now?
Uh, 30, I'm not sure. 3 or 4?
Good, good. Congratulations.
Thank you. We're sure to be honest with you.
Well, I know it's a good state.
Guys will be smiling today. It's out there for something in that. Somebody else, Commissioner, would you like to stand up?
There you go. Sir?
Yep, Jersey, congratulations, Mr. Davis. And again, we appreciate it, thank y'all, and appreciate it.
Thank you. One more time.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate you for this.
Next up will be the resolution to honor the 2021 Roan State Raiders men's basketball team. Do we have a motion? Mr. Berry, do we have a second?
Sure.
Do we have a second? Mr. Berry, anything?
Yeah, not only, not only have we had great high school basketball in our county, but this year's Roan State Community College team was the first team in the history of Roan State going back to about '72, I guess, to play in a national championship game. The girls won the national championship several years ago, but this boys' team has prevailed, and what's really unique about it is we had a first-year coach that took his team to, I don't know what he's gonna do for an encore, but of course Randy Nesbit was there for 30-something years, and so now we've got another team representing Roan County, because when they say Roan State Community College in Kansas or wherever they're going, it's Roan County, Tennessee. Coach, we're proud of the fact that you're representing Roan County well, and your team, and we'd like to, we'd like to do a resolution for you as well, so if you guys want to come up, I'm sorry, you got a second.
We have a second. Take Mr. Ellis. Mr. Ellis, do you have anything to add?
Mr. Berry put it very well. Proud of you guys.
Anyone else? Let's wait, call roll.
Bell?
Aye.
Berry?
Aye.
For Shears?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
East?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
Resolution passed. I'd like to read this resolution, please. It's a resolution of the Roan County Commission honoring the Harman High School boys' basketball team for their winning performance. Whereas, the team was led by first-year coach Alan Holt and assistant coach William Caldwell, and whereas, the team went to the Tennessee Community College Athletic Association, National Junior College Athletic Association Region, set a term with a 15-year, nine-loss record, and won two games to advance to the championship, and whereas, the third seeded Raiders prevailed to the great overtime effort to defeat the number-one seeded Iowa State Community College of 78-75, pledging to the Tennessee Community College Athletic Association, National Junior College Athletic Association Region, seventh championship, and bidding to the team's first ever National Junior College Athletic Association Division One Men's Basketball Tournament. And whereas, this being the Roan State Men's Basketball Team's first ever conference championship, and whereas, we recognize not only the athletic director, the coaches, and the entire team for their outstanding performance, but it's also fitting to recognize the community and the holders supporting the community college athletics. Now therefore, be resolved that the Roan County Commission does hereby honor the Roan State Men's Community, uh, Roan State Men's Basketball Team for their winning performance. Congratulations.
I just wanted to mention too, before we give them this, is that our, our county executive played on our Roan State basketball team, but I don't think y'all ever made it to the...
You won't come a long way from our 6-16 record.
I wasn't gonna say that. I just said you hadn't played anymore, now. I wasn't gonna say that.
Mr. Woody, did you shrink over time or hey, bro?
You, you know, you guys thought you were around some... I tell you what, just real quick, what I'd like to do is see how many, I mean, just tell us what state you're from.
I'm from Ohio.
Ohio.
From South Sudan.
So where?
South Sudan.
Oh, South Sudan. That's right down the road, down 27.
He wins.
Tennessee, okay?
Tennessee.
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 North Carolina.
North Carolina.
Tennessee.
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 Tennessee. Okay, so, so Coach, you, you gotta do a little outside recruiting. You got some good Tennessee guys here, but, uh, even the way, so good, glad to have you with us. You know, Coach Nesbit had me one sometime from, from the Bahamas.
Oh, he always has.
I had to keep so, yeah. We, we go the extra mile for you here in Roan County. Congratulations, Coach.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations, guys, on the great season.
Hey, Ron Woody, turn this, please. Executive, yeah, thank you, sir. Very good. Look at him, look at him. Our enemy. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is hearing the delegation. At this time, anyone who wishes to address the commission can do so. Right now, we just ask that you come to the podium, give your name and address for a record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone want to address the commission? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Elson Beard. I live at 2002 Decatur Highway, Kinston, Tennessee, and I just wanted to announce that I'm running for county executive. I am qualified, and I want to serve my community. I have a communication degree as well as a master's in business, and I have a Facebook posting. You can find me at Elson Beard at Roan County Executive, and I will be hosting a meet and greet on April 30th from 5:00 to 8:00 at Southwest Point Golf Course and extend a welcome to everyone in the county. I know you all have had a long day by the time you get to this meeting, so I'm gonna keep it short. Many have, many of you have chosen a political path, but for those that haven't, I'd like to ask for your vote and to consider me for your next county executive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Byer, how are you?
Good, gentlemen, thanks. My name is Tony Byer, 200 Highland Way, Harman. I'm here to pass along some information. There's a bill running through the U.S. Congress. It's called the COES Act. It's HR 3544, and the full name of the bill is Computers for Veterans and Students Act. If, this bill, it just came out of committee on April 6th last Wednesday. It passed unanimously through the committee, so now it's gonna go to the full house. But here's what the act will do. There's a lot of words there, but this act would provide hundreds of thousands of repairable computers available to nonprofit refurbishers to repair and distribute in communities nationwide. Okay, why is that important to us here in Roan County? Well, one thing, RoanNet, a company my wife and I founded, that's what we do. We're a not-for-profit computer refurbisher, and there's gonna be hundreds of thousands of computers, and I gotta believe with the nice and lab being here, that they're gonna have a lot of computers that they can donate, and so we can turn them around. Over the last three and a half years, we've given away now about 500 computers in accounting, and this will give us an ample opportunity to give away more. So I would ask you and the audience to contact your representative, Mr. Fleschman, and also Blackburn and Haggerty as the senators, and that's in this part of this bill when it comes to the full. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the commission? Mr. Dennis?
John Dennis, 416 West Wheeler Street, Rockland, Tennessee. Just wanna thank y'all for your service. You know, there's a lot of good things going on in the county, and I'm happy to live here. I really am. I've had a choice to live here and accompany the county. I've gone to both commission meetings, and I love it here. This is, you know, and this, it's just way more home, and, you know, there's more of a unity and spirit here. It's not a canned type thing so much, but it's still good, people caring about people and getting emotional about it. A little bit of emotions, but Robert and I got to attend Elton John's, uh, his shind Friday night, his farewell, farewell Yellow Brick Road at Thompson Bowling Arena. You know, we could probably bring some of this, some of these events to the Expo Center or something, would be neat. It was very touching, Yellow Brick Road, and also, it kind of reminded me, I'm kind of on yellow brick roads and red brick roads. When I was young and playing in the streets as a, as a young kid, and we lived on red brick streets, and now they have them all over country and downtown areas, most of them are shut off from traffic and that, but those old yellow brick roads are, are nice to see in historic areas. But I remember when I was young and we were playing on Good Friday, this is Easter weekend, we all lived, on Good Friday, my aunt would, uh, told everybody around 3 o'clock in the afternoon, all of us kids that sit on the red brick wall here, we're gonna take a timeout for half an hour and think about, think about what this Friday is really all about. And that left an impression on me all my life, and I've had timeouts, and I've felt like, you know, getting up, being out, working, and being in the middle of the eclipse that I had a few years ago, and having been able to go on a mission to Sweden and see the Relia Barelis, the northern lights, and it was one, it's a wonderful life, you know. People have been around and traveled, they didn't know what I'm talking about. I've just been blessed in that area. I just wanna let y'all know that this Easter weekend's really special to me. I just want you to know that it's about Jesus, and he's a, he's a light, and a light of the world. I know that he lives, and I know he's our savior, our healer, and I know we've got our breath and everything we have about us, that to move about it comes from him, so we pray So, we pray to him at the beginning of this meeting, meeting. And, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Anyone else? Yes?
Move slow, I've got a couple new knees. I know some of you, my mother saw it out, it's on Homer Cox side of the mayor of Auburn Springs. I live at 1012, I'm circling Auburn Springs, Tennessee. I'm representing the city tonight, uh, getting ready to tear down a building in town that's purely loved. I have five brothers, all of them served military, two served WWII, my dad served WWII. Uh, my brothers, all my brothers went to, two sisters went to school, all of them graduated here. Our citizens and most of our business people like to keep that parts of that school intact and use it for our community. Right now, the Sprowler kids don't have a place to practice basketball, and we have to look at summer practice on Wednesday night, which is a church night, and we don't like that. We'd like to get them headed in the right direction, and this is the direction that we're gonna begin at. And I know this is gonna be a long, you have no say-so yet, but in the future, after the school board, I'm sure you will, it will have many meetings like it was, building skills property before, because we can bring a lot of people to the meetings and we'll get as many signatures as required, up to about 2,000 or so. So, any consideration you'll have in the future on that, we consider, we appreciate your consideration, oh, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank y'all for attending. Mr. Lefebvre, county attorney's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, I received the lien release that we have been waiting for regarding the Gullhorn Road property that you all voted to establish an ambulance station on, but can't use it yet. My instructions were to hold it until I receive permission from the lender to record it. So, we have extended the two contracts with the two sellers to May 10. Shortly before this meeting, I received by email their signed documents extending the contracts. I'm hoping that when we come back here next month, we'll either have it closed or we'll be very close to having it closed. We had property maintenance court last week. We had three cases of all of those three that hurt that people had brought their properties into compliance, so we were able to dismiss those. We have court again on May 12. And that is my report. In case anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions for county attorney? Thank you, Mr. Lefebvre. County executives report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be real brief here. Uh, on your desk, you should have a summary of our financials, and it is a report of really probably the end of March, uh, some of the March may not actually be printed on this, but if you look at it real quick, and the, the top number's important numbers, the property tax, we are at 98 and 100% collected, depending on which fund it is, and most all funds are operating as anticipated. I don't think there's anything extraordinary in any of them. Uh, we, we work on an annual budget, uh, a year, and because of that, some of the ventures will be off. Property tax, you know, comes in, uh, by, by March, so you'll see that at almost 100% and boost your revenue up. Some of the funds are on sales tax, uh, gas tax, and those come in on a monthly basis, so your revenue will not perform as well in some funds as others just because of the nature of the category of the revenue. But things look, uh, well on the financial picture. That being said, uh, the budget committee met tonight, and we started working on the 2023 budget. The, uh, we, uh, looked at a, a few funds, we looked at some of the ARP projects that will file through the budget committee, where the status of those are. We also started just briefly talking about ARP and how it impacts our capital funds. Uh, and, uh, we have some recommendations that will come through at the next commission meeting. We looked at the value of the penny, it's up from about 136,000 to about 140,000. Uh, we also did approve, uh, recommendation to the legislative body, our debt service, which is the first budget we always start on. Uh, in years past, we had the 151 debt service fund, 152 and 156. 156 closed last year, 152 closes this year. There's a resolution in your packet regarding that closure, so we're down to the one debt service fund, which makes it very, uh, a whole lot simpler for budget committee, county commission, and the public to understand, uh, our indebtedness picture. So, uh, the 2023, uh, 23 budget, uh, is underway, uh, and from that standpoint, um, we, uh, there's a couple resolutions I may wanna comment on. There are two, um, small videos we wanted to show. This is in regard to, we showed one last month that was about the closure of the K-25 site. Uh, these two videos are a product of a committee in which we chair with Oak Ridge, Anderson County, Knox County, and Morgan County. Uh, and it is a, uh, a, a committee, we call it the Oak Ridge Reservation Community Alliance, very similar to the Energy Community Alliance, which is a national organization. So, if Kenny, if you'll roll those, these are about 20 or 30, 30 seconds a piece, I think, so. As the community continues to change, as we go through the, I guess, what we have heard, I heard it today, I've, I've used the word a few times, a nuclear renaissance. Uh, these are some videos we are using to send out to corporations who are locating here. Uh, some of them are relocating here from other places, some of them are new, and there's a lot of energy going on in and around the, um, the K-25 site. Uh, I think we mentioned it last month, Cairo's Power, GE Hitachi with TBA, uh, Koki Pharmaceutical, uh, Alter Safe Nuclear, uh, and, and the last one that was announced was Trisso X, X Energy, which is a fuel fabricator for the small modular reactors that is, that are under development, uh, predominantly in Oak Ridge, some in Idaho Falls, and some out in the Midwest along with Idaho Falls. So, uh, there's a lot going on, and I just wanted to update you on, uh, some of the things going on in the area. Be glad to try to answer any questions y'all may have and reserve the right to comment on any resolution.
Mr. Hester?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Woody, one question, you said the value of the penny's gone up to 140K now?
Yes.
So, our debt per capita, do we know what, have we started looking at it beginning of the budget?
We will do a debt report. Uh, it's probably in the development right now, probably in two months, we'll have our debt report, annual debt report out.
And I seen the education fund, the school fund was 57 million, seven, 10?
The general purpose school funds, probably about 57, 56, 58 million, yeah.
57, 70.
57.
Uh, and reflection of losses to us from, uh, at the end of this year, I guess we won't know that till the school board tells us that.
That's correct. We won't get the school budget probably till the end of May at the best, maybe the first...
First week, second week of June.
Yeah, first or second week in June. So, it will be the last budget that comes before the budget committee. And, uh, some of the other budgets, if we're, if we're ready to go, we may have a workshop with the commission before that. We'll try to get a, an adopted budget before the end of June.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Ms. Barrett?
Mr. Woody, uh, do we have an update on the airport in Oak Ridge? Is that, is that still, and how will that affect, uh, or will it affect while, while they're in the construction of that? How will that affect our new welcoming centers?
Uh, the answer to that is yes, yes, there's always something moving up there. I, I haven't had an update on the airport, uh, in some time. I was in a meeting today, and we were talking about the, uh, the next records of decisions which will be, um, on the environmental cleanup and the final closure that's trying to take place at, at the K-25 site. Uh, Oak Ridge is, of course, spearheading the airport, and, uh, it's been a while since I've had an update on it. It's still, it's still, um, on schedule, my understanding, which will be sometime out still, but, um, if, if you recall, there's a, there's a Trisso X, I don't even know whether you all even saw that or not, they have bought, I think predominantly the Heritage, uh, Horizon Center, which is across the road from the, uh, uh, Rome County Industrial Board's, um, hand training facility, yeah. So, uh, that Tristar X is a big development, and, and a lot of those companies is because of the airport. I'm trying to tie this back into the airport. The airports are a big draw on some of them, so they can, uh, do the production and then exit, uh, quickly if it's a radio pharmaceutical that has, that has a short, uh, you know, half-life on it.
And, and, and you mentioned the, uh, I guess the property effort, that for the ambulance station, do we, are we planning, what type of building do we got up there?
We are, what are you working on? We have, we have engaged some architects, engineers, to try to see, they, they have, they have built a few recently, and Tim Silver's here, and, and you, I met him, but Tim met with him, but we're trying to look at a prefab building to go there. Uh, we'll no doubt to engage some architects just to do some, uh, leveling on the site and various things, but...
And on the Harriman station, are we coming in okay on that one with, with remodeling and stuff?
We're coming in, I think we'll be in, uh, about 2:30 maybe? Is that about right? And, and we should, uh, uh, cost-wise, and that's fully operational, uh, we should be in it within four weeks, Tim?
Hopefully sooner than that.
We, we had some supply chain issues on the garage door and a few other little things, but, uh, the building and, and we'll, we have some, probably some paving to do, concrete out front, but it looks like we'll be in the neighborhood of 2:30. And, you know, in today's market, that's probably, uh, 150 if it was two years ago. You know, that's how much things have changed price-wise.
So, on the ambulance on Gullhorn Road then, is this, should, should we, should we put that one back a little bit to see if supplies and stuff go down, or are, are we gonna be okay on the, on the amount of money allocated?
We hope we're gonna be okay on the amount of money allocated. What we can't do is slow projects down because, uh, the ARP money is being used, and there's a deadline to have it spent too. So, what we'll do is we'll go out and, uh, yeah, it's 2026, but we are not expecting anything to really improve on the supply chain probably for, well, 24, 36 months, so...
And on the school budget, um, next year's, the new, the governor's new plan was going in, right? So, this year, we're still on the...
That's, that's correct. We're still on the BEP funding model this year.
Anything else? Mr. Person?
Uh, Mr. Woody didn't answer my question about the South Harriman, ambulance service.
Anyone else?
I stand corrected, Mr. Woody, it's 59 million, 465,000, the estimated budget.
60 million, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, next up, special orders. Special order number one, confirmation of appointment of Patrick. Patrick Ledoux to the Rome County Board of Doning Appeals. As an alternate Harriman, the new term will expire April 30th, 2026. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Done motion by Commissioner Ellis, seconded by Commissioner Hester. Mr. Commissioner Ellis?
That'll do a good job.
Mr. Hester?
Nothing, Paul.
Anyone else? Calorob, please.
Bell?
All right.
Barry?
Yes.
Brashers?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
East?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Ledoux is confirmed. Next up is confirmation of approval to appoint Commissioner Mike Parkinson to all vacant positions on the Rome County Commission Committees caused by the passing of Stanley Moore.
Make a motion.
We had motion over here, we had a second over here by Commissioner Person.
Mike does a good job there.
Anything, okay, anything over here? Things go through, the same thing he's going through. Okay, yeah. Calorob, please.
Bell?
All right.
Barry?
Yes.
Brashers?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
East?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
The approval is confirmed. Next is zoning resolution 4-22-01Z, a resolution, Rome County Planning Commission recommending action by the Rome County Legislative Commission on a resolution meaning the Rome County zoning map has requested, uh, to Rome County to rezone map 56B, group eight, parcels one, two, and 16 from A2 developing agriculture to C2 highway commercial.
Make a motion.
We have a motion over here. Mr. Hooks?
Second.
Where's the second? We have a second.
Second.
We have a second over here. Mr. Hooks?
It come before the, uh, public hearing. Uh, there to be no opposition to it. We welcome any, uh, any industry or, uh, control fronts or any other business in Rome County that will produce cell packs.
Thank you, Commissioner Hooks. Commissioner Henderson?
All right, that's fine.
Anyone else? Calorob?
Bell?
All right.
Barry?
Yes.
Brashers?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
East?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution 4-22-04, a resolution authorizing the naming of a private drive located in the 2nd Civil District, Rome County, Alpheim Rock Valley Road, map 124, parcel 012.00 to be Emmett Way. Do we have a motion to...
Make a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Commissioner Hester?
Nothing, Paul.
Commissioner White?
I have nothing, David.
Anyone else? Calorob?
Bell?
All right.
Barry?
Yes.
Brashers?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
East?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Resolution 4-22-05, a resolution authorizing the county executive to execute a 38-month agreement with Brightly Software Incorporated for providing the SmartGAP program, which providers, which provides an operating system for cussing, enforcement, and planning and zoning. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Hester, seconded by, was that Dan?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan, Commissioner Hester?
No.
Commissioner Dan?
Nothing, Paul.
Anyone else? Calorob?
Bell?
All right.
Barry?
Yes.
Brashers?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
East?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Resolution 422-06, a resolution placing surplus certain Rome County vehicle and equipment as listed on the attached sheet dated March 29th, 2022, and the title is Surplus Vehicle and Equipment.
Make a motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hester, and we have a second by Commissioner White. Commissioner Hester?
Nothing.
Mr. White?
I have nothing, David.
Anyone else? Calorob?
Bell?
All right.
Barry?
Yes.
Brashers?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
East?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Hendrickson?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Hooks?
Yes.
Meadows?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
And Wilson?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution 4-22-07, a resolution establishing a contribution rate to the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System, TCRS, for legacy employees, those hired prior to October 1st, 2015.
Make a motion.
Done motion by Commissioner Hester, anyone? Do we have a second?
Second.
But, I mean, motion by, uh, second, Commissioner Dan, Commissioner Hester?
Sir, I'll give it to Mr. Woody for, for comments.
Yeah, each, each year, we have to adopt a resolution. Uh, we are basically funding just a little bit more than what's required in the, uh, activities at this time, so, um, we, we recommend this, uh, resolution. You see the rates in there, we're paying at 3.35%, which is above the required 2.56%. We've done that, we, we started paying at one time about 7 or 8%, and it dropped the percentage, and we've stayed about a, a point, a point and a half above the required rate, which basically strengthened the, the retirement contract issue. If we can keep it at 3%, we'll be doing exceptionally well for a long time, so we've contributed a little bit more since it's so low.
So, what are we doing to it?
Pardon? Are we lowering it? It, yeah, we, uh, I think we did lower it a little bit, but we're above the minimum required. So, every, every year, there's an actual study based upon how many retire, uh, based upon how many people's coming into the system, and based upon how well the portfolio performed. Yeah, yeah, I mean, every, every year we have to look at it and redo it, and we have two retirements here. We have the legacy employees which are on just the defined benefit plan, and then any new employees are on the hybrid plan, which is, it cuts about the defined benefit historical in half, and then you're, you're guaranteed, you have a 401K.
Mr. Barry. So, Mr. Woody, this, the T, the T C R S is the state retirement system.
That is the, that is the state retirement system.
So what we're contributing to is the county retirement part of that.
That is correct, of the T C R S, yes.
So they're actually, so we're actually, we're actually building a bigger base for our employees than what they would actually get from the, from the state retirement program.
They, they're not, they're not earning any more, we're just keeping our financial picture stable. I mean, I'm fixing to retire, I want to make sure that, you know, that picture.
That's what my next question is.
And we have a couple commissioners that's retiring, the same thing takes place.
But, but is this, so, so this is on a county-by-county basis?
It is on a county-by-county basis, that's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Barry, you asked kind of the same thing I was about to say, so this money is dedicated for the Rome County employees.
This is the Rome County section of the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System.
So our employees maybe get a better retirement than another county's?
No, no, the retirement is the same in Rome County as other counties. I have seen retirement systems that have not adequately funded. When you get ready to put their budgets together, the county legislative body has to contribute fifteen, sixteen, seventeen percent.
So they can catch up with it.
Yeah, so, so what you do, if you adequately fund it over the years, and it, it has a lot to do this with the actuarials, that, you know, how many people are retiring, when they're retiring, what age they're retiring, how long they live after they retire. All of that goes into the, the picture, but one thing that goes into picture is the earnings of the money that's there, and how you have performed in the past, and have you adequately funded your retirement. And you have to do the minimum. Oh, we have done the minimum when we've had to pay at least nine percent. And, and then when nine percent on our employees, it's a big cost, well, then the rate goes down to seven, well, we may have contributed eight, the rate goes down to six then, so basically you, you are adequately funding, nobody's retirement changes, it just keeps your rates low, that's what we're trying to do.
So, so do we invest, do we invest our own money, or do we send it to?
Treasurer. Treasurer invests all this.
Treasurer's getting it all.
They get it all.
We're still responsible.
I didn't keep up with.
For prior employees.
We are spot, responsible for paying the percentage to maintain a sound retirement system based on the state's actuarial study. And they are projecting seven, I think seven and three-quarters percent of annual return on their investments. So if they have a return one year that's four percent, the actuarial may say, okay, you need to contribute not your two point five six, we may need to contribute three percent. Well, we're contributing that now, so it all kind of goes into the point.
Everything you hear, our retirement system from the state is one of the best in the country, right?
We, we, we have the, the most, one of the most sound financial retirement systems in the nation, that is correct. We're one, two, we, we bump up and down, but each municipality, each government entity that's a member of Tennessee Consolidated Retirement has a different rate based on the actuarial of that particular county, so there's a lot of studies. So, so your teachers across the state are all in one system, so all the teachers have the same rate. The classified employees in education has a different rate than the teachers.
Thank you. Anything else? Anyone else? Calorob.
Bell.
All right.
Barry.
Yes.
Brashers.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
East.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Parkinson.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Hendrickson.
Yes.
Esther.
Yes.
Hooks.
Yes.
Meadows.
Yes.
Parkinson.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And Wilson.
Resolution passes. Resolution four dash twenty-two dash zero eight, a resolution to close out estimated end of cash balance from the Rural Debt Service Fund one fifty-two into the General Debt Service Fund one oh one. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mr. Hester, seconded by Ellis. Mr. Hester?
No.
Mr. Ellis?
I just think this is a cleanup. Mr. Woody has anything to add?
And this is a celebration, okay? This is a celebration, we have paid off our rural debt. Here. It's thirty years in coming, I guess, I don't know.
So.
Yes.
Is this the thirteen cents that came off last year, Ron?
No.
All right, so how, what's in this?
We had Fund one fifty-six that came off last year.
So.
I'd have to go back and see how much money we, what the tax rate was on this one.
This is the, for what?
Yeah, this, there'll be thirteen on this one. Last year, I think we, we pulled off six or seven.
Six or seven.
Six or seven.
Gave, gave six back.
Now, we gave seven back, retained six, so you're saying thirteen cents is on this fund here?
Our one fifty-six fund paid off last year, the one fifty-two pays off this year, the exact numbers are what's in those debt service funds, I'd have to go back and look at the records.
Yeah, because you know where I'm going with that.
There's a lot of numbers that float around, and some of them, I, I just decide not to remember.
Because people of Rome County like to have their money back, that's where I'm going with that.
Seconded then.
So. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, when budget committees, when budget committees putting the budget together, it's just like tonight, they recommended the one fifty-one fund. The one fifty-one fund had thirteen cents in it last year, I think's what it was, and it will maintain thirteen cents this year, or that's fourteen or fifteen, I can't, was it thirteen? So, but all of these debt service funds had a different tax rate, and we do not have to levy a tax rate on these funds next year. The tax rate levied on these funds, one fifty-two will be zero next year, one fifty-six is zero this year, and zero next year also.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Calorob.
Bell.
All right.
Barry.
Yes.
Brashers.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
East.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Parkinson.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Hendrickson.
Yes.
Esther.
Yes.
Hooks.
Yes.
Meadows.
Yes.
Parkinson.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And Wilson.
Resolution passes. Resolution four dash twenty-two dash zero nine, a resolution amending the Recovery Court two thousand twenty-two budget in the General Fund one oh one. And motion by Commissioner Hester, seconded by?
Second.
Commissioner Barry, Commissioner Hester?
No.
Commissioner Barry? Was Mr. Woody had anything?
We just received some more money on this grant, so we're appropriating it, twelve thousand dollars.
Anyone else? Calorob.
Bell.
All right.
Barry.
Yes.
Brashers.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
East.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Parkinson.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Hendrickson.
Yes.
Esther.
Yes.
Hooks.
Yes.
Meadows.
Yes.
Parkinson.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And Wilson.
Resolution passes. Resolution four dash twenty-two dash ten, Art Resolution Project eleven amended, Pine Ridge Sewer Project. Commissioner Barry? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by? Roger Wilson. Commissioner Barry? Yeah, this, this, like, this came to us, and, uh, this is, this is going to, this is going to tie our sewer system in. We've got, uh, we've got some additional money that, if, if you're looking at Pine Ridge Road area, we, we felt like the Pine Ridge Road area is probably the spot in the county where if a match is ever thrown out, it's going to, it's going to flame and, and continue to spread. And so we were, uh, pleased to, to fund the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help with this part of the, of the sewers. Commissioner Wilson?
Nothing further.
Excuse me, just a minute, this is, this is the two fifty of their entire project.
Right.
Yeah, so this is two hundred and fifty thousand, subject to Herman C D or H U B matching the two fifty.
Right. And this, this is from a A R C grant that, that Herman was applying for, half a million dollar grant for a million dollars, and, and so for, for the, for the, uh, for the two fifty, then we would hopefully. And they also indicated that there were some options on some land adjoining that, so that if, if they could go back to those folks and tell them that, and, and we also, and I think we're probably still waiting on the City of Herman to tell us whether, whether they were going to match that two fifty or not, right?
Yeah, so, so our, our resolution of two hundred and fifty thousand coming out of our art money is subject to the City of Herman doing two hundred and fifty thousand, and subject to, Mr. Barry said that our, uh, A R C grant of five hundred, so it's roughly a million dollar project. The City of Herman had not made their determination yet whether they would.
That, that would be the City of Herman and, and the H U B coming up with the two fifty.
Either or.
Either, either or, yeah.
Totally.
To match our two fifty.
Yeah.
But we, we felt like that was, uh, that was probably one of the, uh, one of the, the hotspots that, uh, you know, that, that could potentially be, if you get sewer there, now you're talking hotels, you're talking, you're talking strip malls, you're talking a whole lot of, a lot of different things, uh, rather than, rather than just one particular thing, so that's, that's what that is. Anyone else? Calorob.
Bell.
All right.
Barry.
Yes.
Brashers.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
East.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Parkinson.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Hendrickson.
Yes.
Esther.
Yes.
Hooks.
Yes.
Meadows.
Yes.
Parkinson.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And Wilson.
Resolution passes. Resolution four dash twenty-two dash eleven, Art Project thirteen, a resolution that will appropriate one point one million for infrastructure needs at the Sam Redden Parkway Extension in the Rome Regional Industrial Park. Do we have a motion?
So I'm going to.
Commissioner Hester, uh, Commissioner Cunningham, Commissioner Hester. Commissioner Cunningham. Anyone else? Mr. Barry? And on, and on this one, what we did was we, we actually partnered, I guess, with the industrial board, uh, they had some, they had some, uh, I guess, I am just here, they had some, they had some funds from, from the sale of property, and so we, we, uh, we, we put up money, and they're putting up money as well from, from their funds. So again, it was a, it was a combination of, uh, of an effort to get them, uh, some, some money for, for a road that, that needs to be, that needs to be built out in the industrial park extension. Anyone else?
So, so this is an appropriation of money that we have received on sale of property, uh, and it's also part of our art money, so that's what Mr. Barry was saying, is to combine both. So you're approving a resolution that, that deals with the appropriation of funds from our regular budget and also approval of project number thirteen as amended.
Anyone else? Calorob.
Bell.
All right.
Barry.
Yes.
Brashers.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
East.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Parkinson.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Hendrickson.
Yes.
Esther.
Yes.
Hooks.
Yes.
Meadows.
Yes.
Parkinson.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And Wilson.
Resolution passes. Resolution four dash twenty-two dash twelve, Art Project fourteen amended, Rome County.
So move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hester, seconded by, who's that?
Roger.
Roger Wilson. Commissioner Hester.
No, I think the individual came in here, Audi, I can remember his last name, he came in here and briefed the, uh, subcommittee and the commission on it, um, nothing follows.
Commissioner Wilson?
No, this is, uh, this is a note ringer on this one. Obviously, this little investment with potential to be returned on that.
Mr. Barry?
Commissioner Wilson?
No, this is a no-brainer on this one. Obviously, this little investment with potential good return on that.
Mr. Berry.
You know, I would just say, these are the kinds of things that we set out to do when we, you know, when we established the committee, is you give some, we give some, everybody gives some, and in the end, we're investing our money. I forget how many homes that he said the sewer line would also, not just the Marina, it's going to open up, hopefully, a whole, a new development down there. In fact, we have some folks, I think, come and said that he was planning on building some houses down there, so it's working like we thought it was going to.
Very good partnership.
Yeah, very good.
And this is a three-way partnership on this one, too.
50 Kingsley, 50 us, and 50 from what's more.
Anyone else?
50 from the older.
Yes.
It's even better. Calerobe.
Dale.
All right.
Barry.
Yes.
Frashers.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
East.
Yes.
Ellis.
Yes.
Ferguson.
Yes.
Ann.
Yes.
Hendrickson.
Yes.
Esther.
Yes.
Hooks.
Yes.
Meadows.
Yes.
Ferguson.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And Wilson.
Resolution passes. Resolution 4-22-13, Arc Project 21, lift set for the Rome County Rescue Squad. Commissioner Ferguson? Commissioner Henderson? Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes, I brought this before the ARP committee here, we met here two, three weeks ago, and what it is, the medical examiner, they're having problems when somebody passes away about lifting. Takes somebody who weighs 200, 300 pounds, it takes four or five people. So they asked me about this year, and I told them I'd worked on it, and of course, I went down and asked Tim today if any available, and he didn't at the time. So we voted the other night to okay to get it, but I believe the way it was explained, I think things may have changed a little bit since then, but Ronnie said, and Mr. Woody said he couldn't give it to the medical examiner, just that way we're going to put it through the rescue squad.
Yeah, well, it's not, it's not the medical examiner does transports.
Right.
It's not the medical, and we cannot transfer the money to the rescue squad because that's a sub recipient. What we'll have to do is purchase it ourselves through purchasing, and our committee recommended 20, so the rescue squad may have to pay us some of the difference, whatever they want to do, but, yeah.
Now, would that have to be beaded out?
Yes.
Okay. I started to say, I've got all the paperwork to, we've been spending about a month working on these things.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, this is the, since it's federal dollars, it has to go to proper procurement, and that's one reason we can't transfer the money to the rescue squad. We can transfer the asset, but we cannot transfer the money because that would put it as a sub recipient, a special audit provision would come into play.
Anything else? Commissioner Henderson? How did you see what's needed, actually? Commissioner Wilson?
So, I want to be clear, I definitely don't have anything against the rescue squad, big supporter of them, but I do have a concern that they have not requested anything of this, it's been through the medical examiner. One of the questions that I have is we give 28 operations, 11 to capital, and 10 to 15,000 on transportation. So I think they probably have in their general fund roughly around 90,000. At what point does the county say, use your money, let's not give on this out of the ARP money? When do they start using their money out of that, since we already give to that? And is there anyone from the rescue squad here to request that? Trust me, I don't have anything against that, but when you're talking 501Cs, and you have five others, east, west, south, blaring midtown, that won't receive nothing, and it did not come through the appropriate thing, you go to a, you go to a committee, get your votes passed, and it comes in and goes. So, and I mean this with all respect, I just don't understand why they're not requesting or using their money that's coming through the medical examiners, so...
Well, I don't know about that, I just know this was brought to my attention, you know, they said they're having trouble, people going out there and missing their horses away, ain't enough people there to lift, you know, you take somebody who weighs 300 pounds, it takes six people to lift. So they thought this year would be, you know, an asset to do that.
So when you say they, are you referring to the medical examiner or the rescue squad?
No, no, I ain't even talked to the rescue squad.
Well, okay, so I guess I'll just, this is me, I'm confused. They have money, we give them money, they've not asked for it, but the medical examiner has asked for it. But we're going to give the money to the rescue squad that has money to do it. So are we going to give money to other ones, to other 501Cs that didn't put in for it? Should we? It's a good question, I think. You have five other organizations that didn't...
We've had a number of organizations that have requested funding of our money. We've had, we did not get a request from the rescue squad or the medical examiner for it. And I guess that was, I mean, that was a question I had when it happened, is, okay, so we're giving the money to someone that hadn't even requested it, or at least haven't gone to the same channels that we publicly announced that it had to go through. I guess in Mr. Wilson's, I kind of question the same thing, because, you know, we've got some 501(c)(3)'s that we have denied money who's asked for it, and now we're going to give money to somebody that hasn't asked for it. I guess that was the question I had, too. And there was some of, you know, we had some of that discussion at the budget committee, I guess, that came about, so...
And trust me, I'm not against the rescue squad, I'm definitely supporting, but I, I mean, we do support them, but they haven't requested.
I mean, Commissioner Wilson, are you saying it's procedural issue?
Some what, yeah.
It's some what?
There's no, is there anybody on the rescue squad even here? I mean, there's, no, so...
They didn't ask.
I know, but still...
But the medical examiner does not do the transports?
No. And the only reason I mentioned it was, is because they was talking about what a hard time they had lifting those people, you know, getting up. And I know the rescue squad does transport, I understand that.
Well, and the medical examiner does not do the lifting, the doctor goes out there and makes a determination whether this unexplained death should have an autopsy, is the autopsy.
No, 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 they do the lifting, too. When you only got three people there, the director's putting in there and sees two people, and they're there, they have to help below them, you know, you know, somebody laying there in the middle of the road, you got to get them out quick if you can, you know what I'm saying? And I don't think, and like I say, I've got nothing.
Doctor Bodak comes in our office weekly, he has yet to say anything to me about it.
But it don't matter to me, I mean, I understand what being seen, what the other thing is, the east end, or this, or whatever, they don't go out and dig bodies up, the rescue squad does, you know. I think this is something for the county, not, and like I say, not throwing off on them, but I'm just saying, I think it's something that's needed from what I've been, you know, checking on and finding out about, you know.
All right, Mr. Berry. I've got Commissioner Dan.
Well, I think my question was answered, because I was kind of confused a little bit in the beginning. Did the medical examiner, did he, is he the one that requested you to do it?
They just, I asked you, and they was telling me one day when I was over there what a rough time they was having, Sandy was assistant, and I told her, I said, I'll work on that to see if that's possible. She said, it's rough when you go out there and trying to get a body up, and there are only maybe two people there, okay? And they have to help lift them or get somebody to help put them in the, you know, in the risk, you know, in the car, take them, because they do all the training.
I think it's be something good, maybe we go back and talk with the rescue squad and with the doctor, together, and see, and maybe, I'm not against it, of course, nobody is, but I was just kind of confused with the medical examiner asking, he don't do it, and I was just kind of confused, but...
No.
Okay.
I just kind of took it.
I think it's kind of clear.
Mr. Hester?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to send this back either to ARP committee or to the rescue, or to the budget for the appropriate appropriation and evaluation.
We have a motion on the floor? We move.
We've got to deal with the first.
Do what?
Well, this came from...
ARP.
ARP, I'm chairman of ARP, Mr. Berry's there, person's on it, so...
Yeah, I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Yeah.
Okay, so that is to refer back to the...
To the ARP, the budget.
The ARP committee.
Or the appropriate committee that oversees the rescue squad, I don't know if...
I just want to be careful that how we're doing this procedurally.
Yeah.
Mr. Berry, you have a question?
Yeah, I think where the confusion is coming from is the rescue squad's really not even a player in this thing. They don't, they probably may, they may not know, they may not know that, because at our ARP meeting, we got logged in, is who you can even write the check to, because you have to be careful.
And we decided we couldn't write it to any of them.
Where the money flows, so from a, so from the rescue squad, the rescue squad's, that's why you haven't heard from the rescue squad, is because it's not pertaining to anything that, they're not going to spend $20,000 on a problem. But it was a need that was there, but it gets mixed up in the formula of how many agencies are involved, so I think that's where the confusion.
That's what I'm hearing, I'm hearing it's more of a procedural issue, and it probably does need to go back to, let's say, ARP committee and maybe even nonprofit committee.
So, Mr. Woody, let me ask you this question, if the medical examiner is the one who's needing, could he put this in his budget?
Well, I guess...
Because we can't use the ARP, you know, if we're going to put it in the budget, but...
Well, the, yeah, the ARP money can go in the budget, and we can, we're going to have to buy this unit regardless. It's not a, it's not a coroner, I mean, the coroner is the one who goes out on the scene and says, we need to transport, this person died, we don't know why, it was an overdose or whatever, it has to, the person has to be transported to Knoxville. Because if it's an automobile accident, Tim Suter's group picks him up and takes him to the hospital or wherever, so it's not going to be an automobile type accident that would cause the coroner to come in as much as a death that's unattended.
Could he put it in his budget?
Who's his?
The coroner.
I don't see that how he could, because it is a piece of equipment that he does not use. So this striker cot, what's the price, $30,000 for a new one?
About $24,000 the way we got it.
$24,000 for a new striker cot.
This is the usual, right? Used to rebuild.
Yeah, so what happens is this cot is in all of our amelices, we have striker cots, because we have two people on each run. The rescue squad, if we contract with them to haul, you know, someone to an aut, for an autopsy at UT, so this striker cot will be in a rescue squad vehicle, it will not be in a coroner, we don't provide the coroner with a vehicle or anything, so it's got to be the rescue squad, so we either buy it as a county and give it to the rescue squad, or we use something besides ARC funds and give money to the rescue squads, like we do our 40 or $40,000 annual, or 50,000 we give the rescue squad.
So if we have a contract with the rescue squad to transport the bodies, it could just be part of the contract? Other, so that's outside of the 501(c)(3).
You're talking about other consideration?
Yeah. Right? If we have a contract with them.
We have a contract with them to transport, it's so much per transport.
Okay.
It's just so much.